Welcome, everybody, to the Rye Town Council meeting of May 15, 2025. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be made standing. Heavenly Father, bless this assemblage. Grant us the wisdom to make every decision fair-minded in the best interest for all its residents. Amen.
Hope please call the room.
Councilperson Gilax Sarath?
Present.
Councilperson Randy Selyer?
Present.
Councilperson Pam Jaffe, present. Councilperson, oh my goodness, I was gonna call you Frank, Thomas Snarly, his father, and Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Present.
Present.
First item of business is adopting the minutes from April 17th. If no corrections or additions, may I have a motion in a second?
Some movement.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our first item tonight is a presentation from Mark Pellegrini, Eagle Scout candidate. Mark, the floor is yours. Welcome. And don't be nervous.
Hi, thank you for having me. So basically, I'm just gonna tell you a little bit about my Eagle Scout project and why it's important to me. So every year, me and my troop would go down to Greenman Union Cemetery around Memorial Day, and we would do a flag replacement, but we'd only get around 200 flags. And we would never really even cross the brook, so there was tons and tons of veterans that were not getting flags, and we would be doing the same section over and over. When it really was like this, it was really more like this. So my plan was to figure out where all the veterans were, locate them, and try to find our way to make sure we're not just doing the same thing over and over each year. So first, I had to collect all the names with over 29,000 people buried at Greenman Union Cemetery. I knew this wasn't gonna be easy. I first started down by Rye Town, Rye City Hall. I started by taking pictures of the names on that wall of all the Rye veterans. And I would go around to Portchester, Ry Brook, and Harrow. and Harrison, and do the same thing as well at their veteran memorials. I got a small list from Greenwood Union Cemetery, but it was outdated, and there was a lot of people who were not put there as a veteran because their family did not say they were a veteran. Where am I? Okay, there we are. So once I had my names, I had thousands and thousands of veterans' names, and now I had to find out who was buried in Greenwood Union Cemetery. And I had to find out who was still alive or who passed. So I would go checking off names, like if they're alive, or if they passed, or if they're Greenwood Union Cemetery, or if they're somewhere else. And it was really important to find if they were somewhere else, because there is a lot of different cemeteries, and some were buried in Greenwood Union Cemetery, and some were buried in, like, Portchester, and some were buried far away, like Germany. So one by one, I researched each name. I was surprised to find out how young some of them were. I was shocked to read an article about three young soldiers who were shot and killed in their tent, by their fourth tent mate, and how so many were buried at Greenwood Union Cemetery, and some were far away. Where am I? All right. I quickly realized that a lot of the names in my original veterans' list were not buried at Greenwood Union Cemetery. This is the one I got from Rye. And were not all local residents, so some have lived in New York City and other lives other areas of Westchester. Some came from different parts of New York State, and some came from different parts of the country. But it doesn't matter, because they all have one thing in common, and it's they served our, it's that they served our country, and they were all veterans. My goal was to find as many as I could, and I hopefully found all of them that were buried at Greenwood Union Cemetery. So by list by list, I researched through each name of each of our local vets buried at Westchester, whether it be at St. Mary's in Portchester, or all around the place. Okay. So I then found over two thousand at Greenwood Union Cemetery, which is a lot and lot of people. Now, the next thing I had to do was take my master list of names and go through each and every map at Greenwood Union Cemetery and highlight each and every name, so they would be able to be easily located by the volunteers, by their neighborhoods. Some of the neighborhoods are Beauchamont, there's A-Acre, there's Roman, all different kinds of neighborhoods or sections, and they all have different plots. They're all orientated, very weird, but I figured it out, and I created a spreadsheet which had over the, had all the neighborhoods at Greenwood Union Cemetery. I sorted each veteran by neighborhoods and their plot number. This way, for people who are gonna help me volunteer and place the flags, they could start by the lowest number, and then count their way up and find the next person, and the next person, and the next person. I recently put out stakes by the starting points, if you will. So when they arrived, they'll be met with their instructors. Their instructors will explain it a little bit more. I also made tons and tons of extra copies, so in the folders, it'll have all their sections that they need to do. Yeah, and I have a master list, and I'm making a couple other, a couple other master lists, one for American Legion and one for Greenwood Union Cemetery. So, like I said, the system works by, so the book is meant for Greenwood Union, so when we do the flag replacement next year, we can start at, say, A-Acre, do A, and if we have extra flags, we can do B as well. Then we take it, put it right at the bottom, so the next one will be up, so it'll be constantly rotating throughout the cemetery, so everyone will get new flags each year. Yeah. And we're gonna start in alphabetical order, A-Acre, Anglemont, to B, Brookside, Beauchamont, so on, so on, so on. And each year, try to get as many as we can do until we run out of flags, and take them all, put them at the bottom, and rotate. Depending on the amount of flags we have each year, it would take a couple years to get back to Section A, but we'll be able to honor all the veterans and make sure nobody is left out, nobody is lost. So my main project, the biggest part of the project now, is this Saturday, I'm hosting at the Greenwood Union Cemetery a mass flag replacement. I've collected over two thousand flags. I got a grant from the fire department, and they gave me some, they gave me money to buy more flags. I also had donations of flags, and we're gonna go on Saturday, and with a couple of volunteers that I have from the school, from Rye Moms, all over the place, Rye residents, friends, family, American Legion as well, we're gonna put all the flags on all the veterans' graves. Yeah, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark, that is a very impressive project. Thank you. Very complicated. You can obviously see how much work that you've put into this, and to get so many people involved is terrific. And congratulations to your parents. Very, very nicely done, mother. And by the, I see you taking pictures. This, this is all being photographed, so I'm sure you can get the, the official video of it as well. So thank you very, very much.
I just wanna say, congratulations. It makes me a little emotional, because if I do the math right, about fifty-six or fifty-seven years ago, I did an Eagle Scout project. And it is, your project dwarfs what I did in terms of the effort, and it's incredibly impressive. And you will remember this the rest of your life. It's something that you will always be proud of. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Mark, the scope of what you did was awesome. I mean, the amount of work, like you said, to remember and never forget, two thousand veterans who did so much for this country, and somewhere, they're seeing that you did so much for them. So as a daughter and sister veteran, I thank you. I think we all thank you. This project is going to reach a lot of hearts. So, amazing work.
Thank you so much.
I was involved with scouting Assistant Scout Master for many years, and I believe it's twenty-one merit badges you had to get to up to this point, isn't it?
I believe it's more now.
It's more now?
A couple extra ones.
It was a lot easier than you.
I should've brought my sash. I have, I, almost fifty now, right? Yeah, I have around fifty merit badges.
Yeah, 'cause back in the day, it used to be twenty-one merit badges, just to get, to get up to where you are now. And if it's more, that's all very impressive, because it's a lot of work, and you put a lot of time and effort into what you're doing, and I congratulate you for that.
Thank you.
I just wanna tackle, of course, all of those sentiments. You really should feel proud of yourself and proud of your selflessness in doing a huge undertaking that will benefit so many people. It's, it touches my heart. I mean, it's beautiful, and it's really heartening to see young people who care about veterans and, you know, take their time. I am sure as a young person, you have so much to do, and I can't imagine the amount of time and care you had to put into this. So again, we're all grateful. It's incredibly impressive, and thank you so much. Best of luck to you with everything.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
So if there are people who want to volunteer on Saturday, what time and where do they go?
I have a couple flyers, actually. I'll pull one out real quick. These I put all around my school. It says, it has a little QR code for the signup genius. It's one-hour time slots, but you can sign up for more. It's one hour. It's from one to five, you can pick one to two, or like, one to three, whichever you can do. If anybody would like to volunteer, we always do need a little bit more volunteers. And the QR code for it is right on here.
Okay. I don't, I don't know if that's gonna show up on the screen, but hold it up for a minute. And then, please drop it, drop off a flyer with Ruby on your way, and we'll make sure to, if we can help you get the word out, we certainly will do that.
Thank you so much.
Can I say something?
Sure, of course.
On behalf of the town of Rye, we're grateful that you researched the Belmont section of the cemetery where the town provided graves for veterans that could not afford burial places, and also we have NICS as well. So thank you for identifying the veterans, the veterans that are placed there, and now they'll have a flag on their grave as well. Thank you.
I have to say.
Yeah, Beauchamont.
She was the one who told about where they were. So Hope actually helped, right? Telling him, all these people, you must want to.
That's 'cause Hope knows everything.
Of course. Putting down Hope played a vital role.
You know, I, I thought I knew every piece of property in the town of Rye. I, this is all new to me. That section that you're doing, this is something I didn't know about. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I, where, do you want me to leave these again?
You can hand them to me.
We could maybe put it on our website, or TextMyGov, stuff like that.
Social media.
He needs to know sixteen more people. He's got a hundred. What time are you starting?
One.
First one, going out at one, the last little group will go out at five. So any time between.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Very much appreciated.
Nice to see you, Mark.
Thank you so much.
And did you say where, where they could find you, at Greenwood Union, at the?
So going into Greenwood Union, there's a, there's a main entrance. You're just gonna go past the main entrance. There's gonna be one that says, like, do not enter. Go past that one. There's another road right there. It's in front of, what's the road called again?
Glendale.
Glendale. Across from Glendale. There's a lot more parking that way, so we're going in through there.
Okay.
There'll be.
There'll be signs?
Yeah, there'll be signs. We'll probably put a scout out there as well, so you can see. Yeah. Thank you again. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next presentation is from the Sustainability Committee about our community cleanup event.
Brian, you're up.
Brian, you're up?
Brian?
Hi, sorry about that.
Brian needs to volunteer more.
No, unfortunately, I can't make it on Friday, this Saturday. But, no, I was just saying, you know, the Portchester Library, we have a big bookshelf dedicated to local history, so I was thinking, you know, a copy of his work might be a good fit there.
That'd be great.
Yeah. There you go. Okay, I can just. All right. So, yes, we're almost two weeks out from our 2025 spring cleanup.
Continue.
We had four sites this time around. Downtown Portchester, which is a mainstay for our spring cleanup. This time, partnering with the city of Rye, they did the Rye Nature Center. And then for Ry Brook and Rhineck, also our mainstays of the Anthony J. Pacillopo Community Center, and along the Marneck River. So we had sixteen sponsors this time around, and a little over forty volunteers. It's hard to be exactly sure, because we didn't get photos from one of the sites. But we got a decent amount of trash off of the roads of Portchester. Councilperson Jaffe, I believe you can attest to how much was taken from Rhineck.
I mean, I was with a few volunteers down in Rhineck, and it was just amazing that by the river, some of the oddities you would find. So, I mean, there was just pizza boxes thrown into the river, and I was just like, what are people doing?
Yeah.
But I would say we, we got about, probably not as much as the other sites, because it's a contained space, but there had to be at least, like, eight bags of garbage taken away.
Yeah.
And like I said, some odd objects. Pizza boxes weren't the oddest of the objects.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't wanna go into what the oddest objects we found in Portchester were. But, yeah, so in Portchester, we had sixteen volunteers. Here's a picture of all of us there. We were lucky enough to get a few members of the Board, Board of Trustees to come out. We had sponsorships from the Capitol Theater and from the Colony Grill, as we have in the past couple of years. So we always appreciate, you know, the, the help that they provide us, and them for being active in our community. We cleaned up a large area of downtown Portchester, ranging from a block, I was gonna say south, but a block east of the library, down to the waterfront, and then south past the Clay Art Center toward Village Hall, and north up to the bridge that connects us, connects us with Byram. So we, you know, we all covered a pretty large area. The city of Rye, like I mentioned earlier, they cleaned up the Rye Nature Center, and they planted annual flowers there. And similar. So thank you very much to Tracy Stora for running that site. And then for Rhineck and Ry Brook, are two smaller sites that we always try to get people to. Clearly, my estimate of bags of garbage taken was very low. Thank you. Thank you, Pam. But yeah, so Rhineck is great. The cleanup along the Marneck River is very important, because it drains out into the Long Island Sound. And the planting that goes on at the community center, I know, is very appreciated by the people who go there regularly. So for Rhineck, we had Kristy Young in charge, and for Ry Brook, we had Greg Rivera. So thank you very much to both of you. And, yeah.
That last picture had Hope and Ruby.
Did it? Oh, there you are. I didn't know who it was. There you go. That's great. That's great. Yeah, so similarly to last year, we started our recruitment push pretty early, and we, you know, ramped it up as we got closer to the day of. In Portchester in particular, we got help from the Capitol Theater to recruit some people, and they incentivized their, their participants, I'll say. I said special thanks to trustee, sorry, Nalagwari in Portchester, because she was able to bring along a group of high schoolers who were very happy to get some community service hours. And as Supervisor Zuckerman mentioned last time about the weather, I couldn't guarantee it, but it did hold out for us, which it, it was, it was a little shaky for a while there. But we had a beautiful day, as you can see from this photo right here. And then, as for, you know, our problems, you know, we didn't get as many signups as last spring, which I view as a disappointment. And outside of the, the volunteers that trustee Nalagwari was able to bring along with her, you know, we're not getting too many teenagers involved, which is, you know, they're, they're the most able to get into small places to pick up garbage. So it's nice to have them along, and it's good to get people involved early about, you know, with caring about the community. And then, as far as looking forward, this is a picture from last year, just 'cause I love it so much. I think we're gonna have to think about ways to further incentivize people to participate. And just as an appeal to anybody who's watching this, please come to our fall cleanup. You know, we need everybody's help that we can get. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
All right. Do you have a date to already? We don't have one, but I'll be back to bother everybody with it toward the end of the summer.
I was wondering, do you know if the local high schools have a sustainability club?
They do, and I reach out to them, but.
Directly.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, people who are predisposed to wanna help in that area might be a good resource.
Yeah.
And it's interesting, because the big reason we started this was that parents are reaching out, saying, our kids need community service hours.
Right, right.
So then we mobilized, you know, the community around that, thinking this would be a great service for everyone.
Right.
So I think a brainstorming session, you know.
Yeah, I think part of it could be that, you know, Yeah, I think part of it could be that, you know, I remember when I had to do community service back in high school and I didn't go to the local schools, but I had to do like forty hours, so if it's just two hours twice a year, you know, it's not that much. So maybe expanding it or.
Did you go reach out to Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts?
Yes.
Scouts now, as you say? Because they have to do their community service too for certain badges and stuff in, in classes as well.
Yeah, I reached out, um, nobody bit, basically, is what I'm getting. But, um, yeah, so we have another topic of conversation here.
Do just one comment, I wanna say I was really impressed with something you did, which is we pulled away from doing Crawford as a site, 'cause Crawford always pulls away from Rhineck and the other places. And I love that you had where I needed most. And you had a ton of people sign up that you assigned the day before to where they were needed most. So I thought that was a really positive and good change.
Thank you.
And it showed that people do wanna help and can be directed.
Yeah, and I think, um, one of the good things about that is, you know, you give people the, um, you know, the feeling of being a hero, you know, like, you know, put up the bad signal and I'll go to, uh, the spot that needs me most. But, um, yeah, so next up, next event, we've got Eco Fest on June eighth, right here at Crawford Park. So it's gonna be a great big fair, we've got lots of table, part, tabling partners, uh, lined up. We're gonna have, uh, all sorts of different, like, one or two time in the day events, so it's a good day to come along and stick around. It's gonna be from ten AM to four PM. And we have things as varied as, uh, seed bombs from the Clay Arts Center to a, uh, a hybrid bus from the county that people can, you know, take a look at and hear some more about. So I think it'll be a lot of fun and I hope that we'll see you there.
Did you think about putting the time on the flag?
Yes, I did.
I'm, I'm putting it in my calendar right now.
Great, yeah, so I'll say it again, June eighth, which is Sunday, from ten AM to four PM. And that's right here at Crawford Park, on the great lawn.
Thank you for your work on that, I know. It's been substantial.
Well, happy to help.
It starts at ten, right?
Yep.
And then we can regroup next week and I can dive in with you.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Comments on non-agenda items, does anybody have a comment on a non-agenda item? Uh, anybody on Facebook?
No.
Okay. Uh, moving on to resolutions, first resolution is to award a contract to conduct repairs to the Crawford Park Picnic Pavilion. Debbie, wanna tell us what this is about, please?
Yes, uh, this has been a capital project that has been discussed for a number of years. Um, it's in the, uh, this year's capital budget as well. Um, the, uh, much-loved, uh, picnic pavilion floors need a redo. Um, there is, I actually, um, Ruby, can you help us with a picture or two? Thank you. Uh, so we have, um, uh, it's, it's absolutely imperative that we address the, um, kitchen floor immediately, but the bathroom floor also is in need of repairs, as is the main picnic pavilion and the pavers area around the, uh, the building. So we, uh, put it out to bid, we have three quotes as per our procurement policy and, uh, the lowest responsible bidder is MTS, which is a contractor with whom, uh, the town of Rye has worked on multiple occasions, so we know that they're, that they absolutely deliver what they say they're going to do, on time, on budget, so that's my recommendation. Uh, it's in the, it's in the, uh, attachment, I believe, yeah. Yeah, the specifications are in the attachment.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm looking for. It's gonna be an epoxy floor because it, that's gonna be, that'll last a lot longer. Okay.
Any other comments? All the bathrooms in the kitchen will all be epoxy.
Any other? Any other comments or questions? This is, as Debbie mentioned, this was, we've been talking about doing this for a couple of years, putting it in the capital budget. And, um, we're finally getting to do it. And, uh, you know, maintenance is really important, it's obviously not in the condition of Newark Airport, but we wanna keep ahead of it and, uh, and so we are. We have a motion and a second, please?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
Hope, call the roll.
Councilperson Axlerod?
Yes.
Councilperson Selyer?
Councilperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Councilperson Ardi?
Yes.
Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes. Next resolution is for the town to enter into contracts with two companies, not designing and ACES custom apparel for the procurement of uniforms and clothing for our staff. Debbie, why do we have two?
We have two, uh, because, um, in doing, we had a, a highly detailed RFP, item by item, and, uh, there were, uh, two companies that had the best prices. So some items are from, are going to be ordered from one of the companies, some from the other, depending upon who offers us the best price. And, um, uh, several of the references that we checked, um, had two in case one couldn't come through. I've had that experience in the past with firms that, that, that won the RFP and then couldn't deliver. So now we have options.
Great.
Questions, comments, motion and a second, please?
So moved.
I'll say it.
Hope, call the roll.
Councilperson Axlerod?
Yes.
Councilperson Selyer? Councilperson Jaffe?
Yep.
Councilperson Ardi?
Yes.
Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes. And we have two tax cert cases. One, first one is forty, four thirty-two West William in Portchester.
Uh, good evening. I'm just gonna pull up the, uh, the refund analysis in a second. Thank you, Charlie, for doing that, by the way. Yeah, the first one is a relatively small tax cert case. The, um, the refund to, on West William Street, the refunds to the school, the town is minimal, the village is, the total refund is nineteen hundred dollars, the school refund is about thirty-nine hundred dollars and the school's been apprised of this, we've discussed this, um, over multiple meetings and I've alerted the, the district that, uh, that this case would be on as, as well as the next one.
Any questions or comments? Motion and a second, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Councilperson Axlerod?
Yes.
Councilperson Selyer?
Yes.
Councilperson Jaffe?
Yep.
Councilperson Ardi?
Yes.
Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes.
The next case is, um.
I have to call the case.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Say, the supervisor, I call the roll, I call, I call the agenda.
I forgot who I was.
Our next, our next, our, our, our next item is a tax cert case for seventeen dash twenty-five North Main Street in Portchester. Jeffrey?
This is a, this is a completely commercial building, uh, and the refunds here are a little bit larger. Uh, the school refund is about thirty-three thousand dollars and the village refund is about fifteen thousand dollars. There have been multiple years, um, negotiated to be discontinued as well, so we believe we've reached a very good settlement on this, uh, notwithstanding the size, the relative size of these refunds, relative to the prior case, but.
Yeah, this, this, this covers a five-year period.
Yeah.
Only one of which is requiring a refund, the twenty-twenty deal, all the others have been, uh, discontinued.
That's correct. I would recommend, uh, approval of the settlement.
And as Jeff says, we, we go over all of these at our, uh, periodic tax cert conferences with all the villages and school districts and they are well aware of the, this, the situation before we get to this point. So, questions or comments? Motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll. Councilperson Axlerod?
Yes.
Councilperson Selyer?
Yes.
Councilperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Councilperson Ardi?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes. Next is a resolution to change the regular monthly meeting date from June nineteenth to June twelfth. Simple reason is June nineteenth is a holiday, officially Juneteenth, the offices will be closed. So the motion is, the, uh, solution is to change it to June the twelfth. I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Say, if there are any questions, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That completes our resolutions. Reports? Do we have any reports today? Crawford Park, I know that Candy is not here this evening.